Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Dare County Board of Commissioners, January the 6th, 2020 Board Meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask Reverend David Morris if he would come forward for an invocation. Reverend Davis? David?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and on behalf of the North Dare Ministerial Association, as always, we give thanks for your welcome here. Let us pray. Spirit of life, God of many names, source of all, on this beautiful winter's morning as we begin the first meeting of the new year, we take this time to recognize that our work, our leadership, and our lives unfold against the backdrop of a reality far greater than any one particular gathering. We recognize that we are only this moment's chapter in the longer story of this wonderful place where we live, and in the story of the many people who have called it home since long before the time of the lost colony, and of the people who will call it home long after our time has passed. May our stewardship be touched with humility and with the grace of knowing that we are all privileged to hold a sacred trust. We give thanks for the grace and the gifts of these elected leaders who come to do the people's business today. We give thanks for all those who give their time, skill, and energy to the work of Dare County, the staff, elected officials, and volunteers, both those who will be recognized today, and all who prove every day that good government can serve and enhance the lives of ordinary people. May their work be given the respect and reward that their dedication deserves. We know this morning that people from every walk of life in our community, in our state, people all across our nation, and indeed, people in nations around the earth, are living not with the tidings of comfort and joy so recently celebrated by Christianity, but with the nightmare threat of war that has suddenly heightened. May our prayer today be that all people of all nations will be spared the scourge of conflict and violence. May national leaders find a better way, and may each of us in every land recognize our part in bringing your peace and justice to the whole human family. Finally, God of wisdom, as they address their agenda today, may these leaders of ours be given the vision and foresight they need. In all decisions and deliberations of this hour, may they be guided by hope and commitment to a future in which the blessings of life and of this place are nurtured, protected, and shared by all for all the many generations to come. This we ask in your presence, in that name which each of us holds holy and sacred, which each of us speaks in the sanctuary of our soul. In that name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. May we stand for a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. County Manager?
Good morning. Happy New Year to you all. The opening remarks for the chairman is first on the agenda.
Thank you, County Manager. Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Got a great crowd this morning. It's hard to believe that we are starting a new decade, and time flies fast. It's hard to believe, but I want to take this opportunity to wish each and every one of you that are here this morning, and those of you who are listening live, a very, very happy New Year and a prosperous 2020. And I hope it will be a fabulous year for each and every one of you. On January, I mean, on December the 17th, our board was honored once again to attend the 116th anniversary of Flight here at the Wright Brothers Memorial. Another beautiful day, much prettier day than the 100th celebration, that's for sure. But I want to thank the board, each and every one of our members for being there, and it's, once again, it's hard to believe it's been 116 years, but a great celebration. That noon, the First Flight Society holds a luncheon, and they, at that particular luncheon, they award the Paul E. Garber Award. And this year, that award was given to 99-year-old Colonel Gail Haverson. As most of you are aware, he's known as the Candy Bomber and was awarded the First Flight Society Paul E. Garber Award. That award is given to a Civil Air Patrol member who completes Level 4 of the Senior Member Professional Development Program. It recognizes those members who have dedicated themselves to leadership and personal development in the Civil Air Patrol. This award has been given since 1964, and it honors the late Paul E. Garber. Garber was certainly noted aviation pioneer and champion of the Civil Air Patrol. That patrol is the auxiliary of the United States Air Force, and it has a three-fold mission. It includes emergency services, cadet programs, and aerospace education. I don't know how many of you might have attended the celebration at Wright Memorial, but Colonel Gail Haverson is 99 years old, and he is phenomenal, continues to just amaze me with his abilities of getting around very, very easily, and his remembrance of the back, actually, it was actually the 70th anniversary of the Candy Bomber's dropping, which occurred June the 27th of 1948, and went all the way through May the 12th of 1949. So, a wonderful human being, a true U.S. patriot, and I was happy to be there and attend that ceremony for Colonel Haverson. On December the 19th, I had the privilege of, I served as a trustee on COA Board of Trustees, and I had the privilege and the honor of hosting Dr. Bagwell, who is our new president here in Dare County, and have some conversation with him about what Dare County and our board has committed to for our citizens of Dare and COA and our new facility, and had a really, really good lunch, and look forward to working with him. And then, later that evening, several of us attended the Waterman United Dinner that's held annually for our Waterman at the Lone Cedar Restaurant. And then, a couple more items I have, as most of you are aware, January the 18th, and I'd like, we'll have a flyer that we're going to present to you in a little bit, and we'll have some comment under public comment, that the Dare County 29th Annual Celebration of Martin Luther King will be held on January the 18th at the Dare Center at 11:00 in the morning. I was doing some research, and I had the privilege last year of being the keynote address at that event for Dr. King, and I was continuing to do some more research, and I thought I'd share a few things about Dr. King that perhaps you may or may not be aware. Dr. King entered college at the age of 15. He skipped the ninth through the 12th grades before enrolling in Morehouse College. The alum, that was the alma mater of his father and his maternal grandfather. Although he was the son and great-grandson of Baptist ministers, Dr. King really wanted to become an attorney. He later decided that the Bible had many profound truths which one could not escape, and he entered the Crozer Technological Seminary in Pennsylvania. He graduated at age 25 with a PhD. This one you'll find rather amusing. He got a C in public speaking. Now, during his year at the seminary, but his final year, Dr. King received straight A's, and he became the valedictorian of his class. When he won the Nobel Peace Prize in 1964, he was the youngest person to do so at age 35. Remarkable statistics here, folks. He was jailed 29 times in his lifetime, once for doing 30 miles an hour in a 25-mile speed limit. God, they'd get me that for every week if I saw me go up and down the road.
Sure, if you heard that, didn't you?
In a speech on April the 8th of 1968, he told the audience, "I've seen the promised land. I may not get there with you, but I want you to know tonight that we, as a people, will get to the promised land." He was assassinated the next day. He's the only person born in the United States whose birthday is a federal holiday. Now, you may say, "Wait a minute, Washington." But Washington was born before the U.S. came to be. In 1983, President Ronald Reagan signed a bill that named the third Monday in January as the holidays observance of Dr. Martin Luther King. I hope each and every one of you can attend this on the 11th, but what an incredible human being, and what incredible statistics, and credit to his profession as Dr. King. Last but not least, I want to welcome each and every one of you on January the 15th at 8:00 in the morning at Captain George's. It'll only cost you about $10. I will be doing a State of the County address on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. 16th, I can't wait, so I can shave this off. We're also celebrating 150 years of our anniversary, and that's why I'm sporting this beard to dress in the attire of that day, so it'll be a combination of a little bit of a history for our citizens, but also a State of the County for you. So, I hope each and every one of you will be able to attend. I'm excited to share that on behalf of the successes of what this board has accomplished in 2019 and what we face in 2020. And then, last but not least, we live in the greatest country of the world, folks. I hope that each and every one of you will do as this board here has done and shared over our many years, and that is taken no bias position whatsoever. We have probably been, as a Democrat and Republican board, the most unbiased board this county has ever seen in its history, and I'm proud to recognize our board for that, and I'm proud that this board, whatever we do, we do it based on what's good for the citizens of Dare County. And I encourage you to take that same attitude, and I encourage you to pray for our country. Pray for this country that we live in, because we are fortunate, we are blessed, and God bless America. County Manager?
Thank you, Bob. Mr. Chairman, that leads us to item two on the agenda, and that's the presentation of the county service pins. Our first one, if Matthew Stowe would come forward to receive a tenure pin from Sheriff Dowdy.
Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning. Good morning, sir. Come on, I ain't gonna bite you. Very nice to be able to be here this morning. Happy New Year to all of y'all. Thank you for everything that you do. We really do appreciate it. This is Matthew Stowe, who's been with the sheriff's office for 10 years. He is down in Hatteras, has worked there the whole time he has been on. A very consistent young man, to say the least. If he was a highway patrolman, he would probably be one of the top troopers in the state for getting rid of drunk drivers on the highways of the state of North Carolina. He does a very fine job of taking care of that in Hatteras, all the way down on the island. Every night that he works, he just brings in somebody that has been so making the roads much safer. A very fine young man, he's got a good family. He's been around for 10 years. I expect that he's lived there all his life, is the best thing. His dad and mom, both of them, his dad's a preacher down there, so he's got good family roots, and I find that, you know, being able to hire somebody that is local, that knows what they're getting into, and are here and appreciate how good a place that we live, they'll stay with you for a long time, and I look forward for him to staying with me a long, long time. I thank you for everything you do. You're an asset to the sheriff's office, and I know you will continue to be that, and here's your tenure pin, and stay about 15 more, okay? Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Matthew.
Next, if Asia Norman would come forward to receive her 15-year pin from Chuck La Sette. I'm sorry, Tammy will be here.
Tammy, Asha, welcome this morning, ladies.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to introduce you to Asia. Asia's done a lot of growing and maturing in her 15 years with DSS. Two things that haven't changed during those 15 years is her bright smile and her desire to help others. Asia has a wealth of knowledge, which she's gained from her different positions within the agency. She started out as a receptionist. She was promoted to Income Maintenance Case Worker, and then again, to Program Integrity Worker, and then recently transferred back to work with me as a triage person, where she screens all of our clients to see which programs they might be eligible for. She's really perfect in this role, because she's one of the first people that the clients see, and her personality, her patience, her respectfulness, and her kindness are key in that position. Recently, Asia played a key role in implementing our new Eye Reception. It's a web-based program. She served as the point person and the liaison, working with all the glitches that came up and with worker error, and that program's running smoothly now, thanks to her. When Asia's not at work, you might pass her on the road. She has a fourth grader, Kai, who's on a traveling basketball team, so she spends a lot of time supporting him. I'm thankful to have you as an employee. I'm so glad you came back to work under me, and hopefully you'll stay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Asia.
Next, if Selena Simpson would come forward to receive her 20-year pin from Jenny Collins.
Good morning, and happy New Year.
Good morning, ladies, and welcome.
I'd like to introduce, for some of you, and maybe reintroduce for others, Lieutenant Selena Simpson, who's here. Selena was born and raised in Currituck, and I think EMS is a little bit in her DNA. In fact, that she grew up in Grandy, across the street from one of the firehouses, where her grandmother was a paramedic for that particular station, and her grandfather was in the Navy during World War II, and her grandparents raised Selena. When she started with us, she was an EMT basic. A year and a half later, she got her advanced EMT, or what we used to call an intermediate. Six and a half years later, she became a paramedic, and nine years later, in 2017, she was promoted to lieutenant. She's been married for 21 years. She has some other work experience as a phlebotomist with Albemarle Hospital, and an ED technician with Chesapeake Regional Medical Center. She has one son, Noah, who's 16, that keeps her very busy right now. He's very active in sports, both football and baseball, on a travel baseball team. He's a sophomore and being looked at by a couple colleges already, ODU and Liberty University, for his athleticism. So, Selena, thank you very much for your 20 years, and look forward to many, many more with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Selena.
Chairman, item three on the agenda is our annual Employee of the Year, and Elizabeth, would, are you, Sean, if you'd come forward to make that presentation, please?
Sean, welcome.
Good morning. For the last year, I've had the honor of being part of the committee, who had the privilege of reviewing so many impressive Employee of the Month nominations for 2019, along with my fellow 2018 Employee of the Month, Pam Matthews with Transportation, and Andy Dutton from the Water Department, and the Human Resources Director, Elizabeth Riley. We took on a difficult task as reviewing multiple nominations and selecting one employee each month who demonstrated a level of commitment to Dare County that went above and beyond their regular job duties. At this time, I'd like to recognize the Employees of the Months for 2019, and if you're present, please stand when your name is called. January is Jeff Derringer with the Sheriff's Department. February, Christian Stilson with Information Technology. March was Chuck Mealy with Public Works. April was Emily Cunningham with the Health Department. May was Ashley Johnson with EMS. June was Mike Hollowell, General Services. July, Randy Grantham with the Water Department. August was Willer Spencer with the Health Department. September was James DeGraw with EMS. October was Kelly McPherson with General Services. November was Bob Bosting with Public Works, and December was Jody Wyant with the Health And our 2019 Employee of the Year is one that was able to manage two roles, one as a peer and the other as a supervisor. In the many nominations presented for this person, these are just a few of the comments used to describe them. Knowledgeable, a mentor, professional, a cut above the rest. Organized, efficient, fantastic supervisor, always available for guidance and support. Lovely, funny, phenomenal, creative, intelligent, uplifting, and has a true passion for the job. I would like to congratulate the 2019 Employee of the Year, Jody Wyant, Manny O'Midas School. Next, school nurse supervisor.
Thank you.
You deserve it.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Jody, that's quite an honor. That's quite an honor, and congratulations for being chosen as Employee of the Year.
Thank you so much.
She's awesome. Her parents are here, her husband's here, and her entire team is here to support her.
Well, let's get them. Get them up here so we can get pictures of them. Come on, let's go.
Can I get my team too?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
You're front and center. You are front and center.
Next, Mr. Chairman, we're at item four on the agenda, and this is our first Employee of the Month for 2020, and if Sheriff Dowdy would come forward to make that presentation.
Welcome back, Sheriff.
Good morning again. Dwayne, you mind coming up here with me? I don't do a lot on paper, but this is what got Dwayne here to begin with, who nominated him, and it's very nicely written, and it couldn't say anything more exact about this young man than what was put on here, because it fits him to the T. So, I'm going to read this. It says, "Dwayne Gibbs has been a major asset to Manny of High School since the day he stepped foot in the building. His calm demeanor and unflappable attitude has made him a steady and force within the school. He serves in many capacities. As a school resource officer, he has the task of upholding policies, holding all within the school walls accountable for their actions, and sometimes spending tedious hours in front of the school cameras looking for information that helps to solve situations that arise: lost articles, broken rules, investigating suspicious activities, and so on. However, his role is so much more. He is an advocate for students in and out of the building, has been known to be a mentor to those who need it most, and is a confidant in some very sensitive situations. He will only take the time to give attention to some of the more challenging students, and as such, has an impact on their daily lives. He delivers positive feedback to students, often keeping in mind that self-esteem is a major component in our students' overall health. By the same token, he delivers constructive criticism in a manner that offers the students the ability to rebound from their behavior but gets a point across. As many interactions with him typically have to do with very difficult situations, I find that beyond the physically imposing physical appearance, which you are a pretty big man, there is a deeply compassionate person that incorporates all the hats that he wears into his duties and responsibilities, including a husband, father, deputy sheriff, minister, teacher, and all-around great human being. Dare County is lucky to have him in the school system even more so. Please consider him for this award." I would echo everything that I said. Dwayne has not been on very, very long, maybe just a couple of years, right? Two years? And in that time, he's had to make decisions as to where he wants to work, because he can do anything. He was on the street to begin with, and started out there, and was just phenomenal in what he could do. He has a nose for things that aren't right, and, you know, and can take care of most every situation he runs into, even with the limited experience he had right off the bat. And as this young lady said, in the school system, you know, there you are the police chief. There's a lot of kids in that school system, so you not only deal with kids and their parents, you know, and he does, and he does that very well. I think the fact that, you know, he's got a little bit of minister in him, a lot of father in him, and things like that, it makes all the difference in the world, and he knows the man that takes care of that, and the good Lord did that, put him where he needs to be, and we were lucky enough to be able to take care of that and put him where he needed to be through what he does, and we're very thankful for that, and I know you'll be around for a long time. Congratulations on the Employee of the Month. I know you've been working hard, but you're a thank you. They're yours. You put that on your desk at school, you gotta give it back at the end of 30 days left, okay?
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Before we go to public comment, if those of you that received an award this morning would go right out through this door with Beth to get a picture, please. If you have public comment this morning and you've not signed up... If you have public comment this morning and you've not signed up, raise your hand, and I'll recognize you. When I do, please come to the podium and state your name. Tell us where you're from. Please limit your comments to five minutes. There's a green light on the podium that will come on when you begin. When the yellow light comes on, it means you have about one minute left, and when the red light comes on, you need to conclude your remarks. On the sign-up sheet, first I have Reverend Spotswood Graves.
Welcome, Reverend Graves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for serving Dare County and for giving me the opportunity to be here this morning. Chairman Woodard, thank you for your comments about Dr. King. After the presentations here, I sort of had the experience of the congregation leaving right before the sermon. So I thank you that you highlighted Dr. King's academic achievements. Dr. King actually came into this position as a young man in his 20s. He was present in Montgomery as a minister of the church there with the Montgomery boycott. In fact, he was lifted up by the community to be their leader. He did not want to take that position. And that first thing of someone saying, "Will you do this?" Put him on the path that we know him for. We know Dr. King for, and the reason that Dr. King is remembered by, I believe that he is remembered in the United States and throughout the world, and particularly in the United States, for having a day dedicated each year to remember his birth, is that it is because of his philosophy of resistance that he is remembered. Dr. King believed in Mahatma Gandhi's work philosophy of nonviolent resistance, and I believe that our country was spared a lot of bloodshed because of the manner in which he led people to resist the affairs of the country. He often said, "The Declaration of Independence holds, 'We hold these truths to be self-evident,'" that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, among them life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. In the March in Washington in 1960, 1963, I believe it was, he said, "We are here to collect our check." Life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, and from the Declaration, from the Pledge of Allegiance, liberty and justice for all. He believed, as many other people believed, that people of darker skin did not have the same privileges, opportunities, even access that people of lighter skin had. And he sought to bring our country into equal opportunity, equal rights, equal justice under the law for all. For 29 years now, this is the 29th year, started by Mrs. Ruth Lewis and her husband Clarence Lewis, Dare County for 29 years has, this year will have celebrated, observed Dr. King as a way to hold up his life, but far more than that, as a way to encourage us to continue that work, that there would be equality for all. Equality before the law, equality of opportunity, equality of citizenship. We meet on the 18th, that is a Saturday, on Saturday, the 18th of January, at the Dare Center, which is right behind, right adjacent to this building here, at 11 o'clock in the morning, for presentations, for singing, for lunch. We hold that lunch each year, a free lunch, because we believe, I'm a member of the committee planning this, because we believe that we need to be talking together. I would ask, how many people have a person of different color as a good friend? Someone that you can call at 2:00 in the morning and say, "I need help," and know that that man or that woman will come? We need to have those kinds of relationships so that we know what people are going through to listen to each other. Thank you. Saturday, January the 18th, 11:00 at the Dare Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Graves. Good morning, Jay.
Good morning. Chairman Woodard, Commissioners, my name is Jay Overton. I reside at 1703 Harborview Drive. This morning, I wanted to speak to you about item 11, which is the flood map update. And this has been a long time coming. We've been talking about these flood maps, I guess, three, four, or five years now. Couple of things that I wanted to share with you all from the public standpoint, the community. Probably about three years ago, there was a group of home builders, engineers, surveyors, who were a part of the local Home Builders Association, and we approached Donna about getting copies of these maps, because we had heard a lot of discussions about it. I think we all have relied in the past on the flood maps as also not only being for insurance purposes, but for construction purposes. And we were seeing some things that were concerning us greatly about some of the elevations that we were seeing, and that did not sit well with us as a community. And we had to understand that these maps, first of all, were set up for flood insurance purposes, not for construction. So this group took it upon themselves to start looking at some of the historical data. We met for probably six, eight months. We brought in realtors. We talked with realtors. We brought in other building inspectors, we talked with Donna. It was even back to the time before Buddy Shelton had retired, is when some of this was going on. And from this, we wanted to make sure that our community was something that we were providing from a professional standpoint to the community, some guidelines that would be safe, they would be informative, and they would create some minimum standards. As with our building code, we build by standards that are minimum codes. That doesn't mean that you can't build more, you can't build stronger, you can't build higher, but looking at it from a standpoint of minimums. So I share this part with you to let you know that for some time now, the community has been involved in this. From that, we were able to work with Donna. She was gracious enough to invite us into the planning sessions that her and other planners within the local communities were having. And we were able to have discussions from a construction standpoint, engineering survey, and regulatory standpoint. So now we have the letter of final determination that came out in December, and we've got six months to work with these. Y'all are going to be having to educate the general public. I read an article this, I guess, past Friday, that was talking about the heyday that the builders and realtors were going to have with the new maps. And I think there's a real lack of understanding within those in the community as to what has gone on in the past and what we are looking at with this set of maps with our flood prevention ordinance. That is the part that gives us the opportunity to tweak this and make it more applicable to our area. So I wanted to personally thank Donna and thank the staff for what they have done to welcome us to be a part of this, and also wanted to let you all know as a body that we too will continue to be a part of and want to help you through this education process over the next six months. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jay.
Other public comment?
First of all, I'd like to say good morning, Happy New Year.
Good morning.
I wanted to address the housing situation that...
Would you state your...
No, my name is George Carver. I'm the Executive Director of Dare Minority Coalition. And for the past year, I'm saying it's been one of our major goals to actually be a part of trying to find accessible housing for those here in Dare County. And first of all, I want to ask a question. What, I'm saying, where are the Commissioners that own this at the moment, far as having... I know we already have the prerequisites from UNC, and that's actually a good start. But do y'all have any developers looking at any particular sites at the moment?
That's ongoing.
It's ongoing?
Yes.
Okay, and at the moment, I've been in contact with a developer, and we actually got a site that's being looked at, and I would like to present to you, Commissioners, some information, and we can actually move forward with that as well. If I can pass some copies out to you gentlemen?
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
I have seven copies. And I believe the last time I actually seen most of you gentlemen was in Raleigh at the North Carolina Housing Convention. And like I said, I'm trying to spearhead this to actually achieve this goal that's been kind of stagnated in the county for many years now. And at the moment, we have leadway right now with this developer, who actually want to pursue this affordable housing, or accessible housing, so call it, here in Dare County, on the west side of the island. It's 19 acres that's available towards, which is actually 80 to 100 yards away from the county property that's out here by Bowser Town. So she is waiting to hear back. I'm saying this is the information that was actually given to me this morning, so I can actually address you gentlemen with this forthcoming, could be potential housing available. So I just need some positive feedback, and if y'all would like to use your property as well, that would be also something that can be initiated with the agreement with this developer. That's pretty much what I have.
Well, we certainly appreciate this information, and we will, all of us, take a look at it and certainly review it and see if it's something that the board would be interested in, as far as property concerns and this proposal, but we give us an opportunity to take a look at it.
Okay.
I can have the county manager get back with you after we've had a chance to review this.
Okay. And I also like to mention, one of our, another major program that's in, dealing with our organization, Dare Minority Coalition, is the reentry program. And in the past month, I'm saying, we lost more than about five people over the past two holidays in my family, so it was less time I was able to actually deal with going to the detention center to get inmates enrolled for school or even job placements. But within that time, I came to this idea, and I'm having this reentry program patented, so it's not just going to be for the county. It's going to be more than statewide, and talking to the lawyers and the developer of this app that I'm getting patented, it's going to be, could be national. So just give me our guys a heads up on that, and something that's going to be actually great for Dare County and the whole nation as well for a reentry program. All right, thank you for your time.
Very good.
Could you leave some contact information?
Yes, sir, I will.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for working on this, too, by the way.
Yes, sir.
Is there other public comment this morning? Anyone else here for a public comment? Any public comment from Buxton?
No comment from Buxton.
Chairman, with that, we would close the public comment and move to item six on the agenda, and Jenny Collins is here with her team to demonstrate some new EMS equipment.
Good morning again.
Yeah, welcome, Jenny.
Well, thank you for this opportunity to give you a brief demonstration of some equipment that was recently obtained through the funding of our FY20 CIP project. So my team's going to set one of our mannequins on the ground here, and we're going to simulate a cardiac arrest and show you some of the new equipment that we've been able to obtain through the funding of the CIP, and explain how valuable that has been to us. So as they're getting set up, we typically run, on average, about 76 cardiac arrests per year.
Jenny, say that, how many?
Seventy-six per year.
Seventy-six, okay.
Last year, in calendar year 2019, we ran 61. So this is a pretty frequent event for us. It's very time-critical that when we do these types of procedures that everything is efficient, as can be, to give the chance, the best chance of survivability with it. So today, I have a team of six people. One of them's not in uniform, because he's going to be the bystander family member, and everything's going to happen right here, so hopefully you can be able to see, or you might be able to stand up. And I'm just going to narrate real quick through it and show you, and talk about some of the devices that we're using. So our scenario starts today with our person who told his family member he wasn't feeling good, needed to go to the doctor, and then went into cardiac arrest. His family member calls 911, activates the EMS system. 911 and Central is able to do a program called Emergency Medical Dispatch, where even if you don't know CPR, they can talk you through and coach you through that. So that's going on. That information is being fed to our responding units, who come in with their crew and all the equipment, and the patient care starts. So as our crew arrives here, we have Lieutenant Lee Goldman, who's one of our district supervisors in our QRV. Paramedic Dale James is going to be our team lead. He's standing right here to my right, who's going to oversee and coordinate all the activities and watch for what's going on. We have Katie Washam at the feet of the patient, who's an advanced EMT. Whitney Kirk is right here, which is also a paramedic, and Nick O'Priya at the head, taking care of the airway with it. So right now, they're performing manual CPR, they're providing the patient breathing through the valve mask device. One thing that Katie is doing right now is called an intra-ocseous infusion. This is something that we do a lot of times to get vascular access, because the arms aren't very accessible during a cardiac arrest. It is a needle that is inserted into the bone marrow, and it's a very rapid infusion from that. The cardiac monitor is on the patient, you can hear it ramp up. They're going to defibrillate the patient. Everybody can't touch the patient when that's going on, so everybody's clear. A shock is delivered, CPR is continued, we have vascular access that is established now, we can give medications through that. Now they're applying what's called a Lucas device. It's a backplate that goes underneath the patient, and then you'll see another piece that Whitney is pulling out here that attaches to that backplate. This is one of the devices that we purchased with our CIP funds. It is a mechanical CPR device, which is able to provide consistent compressions in a much safer manner to our folks. They're not in awkward situations, our positions. We have less CPR interruptions, especially if we're on the beach and having to move the patient or move the patient down steps in a home, and we don't have somebody up in a moving ambulance that the device can be applied to the patient, and you can see how quickly that goes on. So that is one of the devices. A list cost of a Lucas device is just over $17,000. We were able to purchase them a little over $13,000, because the quantity that we purchased, I'm sorry?
How many?
We purchased 25 of them to be able to outfit all of the ambulances and the supervisors' vehicles. So the LifePak 15, which is the cardiac monitor that's also doing that, we upgraded those. We had a LifePak 15 before, it was a version one software. These are version four software, which has really improved the ability to recognize certain cardiac rhythms and interpret those, help us interpret those. And so you can see, everything has gone pretty quick. We have CPR... We have CPR going on. We have intubated the patient, breathing for the patient, IV established, medication going, defibrillations going, everything. And this is a very coordinated team environment that we work in. So now we've pulled in one of our newer power cots that's being positioned right behind. They're going to defibrillate one more time and they can do it without interrupting CPR because of the device, which is a huge improvement to be able to do. So they're going to continue breathing for the patient. CPR is continuing on. They're on a device called a Mega Mover, which is that black device underneath of there, multiple handles, allowing multiple people to be able to pick the patient up. And they're going to place them on the cot. Movements are coordinated again. Patient goes onto the stretcher. You can see CPR doesn't have to be interrupted with this device. The devices hook onto the stretcher and then the stretcher goes into the unit. It is a power lift stretcher. So we have taken off and reducing back injuries from lift injuries, being able to have those power cots and into an ambulance with that. And all total, with the equipment that was funded through the CIP project and being able to buy, one, the quantity that we could at once and do a full system change out, which helps with training and everything else and standardization of our equipment. We are able to save and being able to take advantage of, once I explained with the help of Dave and county manager of understanding the timing, there was a huge price increase that was coming. We saved over $368,000 being able to do that with the funding of the CIP that you all absolutely supported. And you can see how efficient things can run when things are so coordinated. And I know I talked a lot. And I'm going to give you an opportunity to ask any questions that you may have. But I really wanted to show you the investment that you all made into it.
Chris, to count.
Yeah, Chief Collins. So these are geographically spread from north to southeast to the west in our countywide.
Absolutely. Every ambulance has a device that's on it now, as well as our quick response vehicles. And we have done training with every single fire department across the county. So because the firefighters help us a lot on these types of calls. And so they are just tickled pink to be able to have these devices. It's very difficult and it's very fatiguing to do CPR. And we have to switch out responders every two minutes to get the, you know, keep a consistent depth and keep them with the amount of energy that's needed. It's very physically exhausting. Having that mechanical device enables us to be able to have that consistency and it improves the blood flow that's getting to the patient's brain and saving cells.
Thank you.
How long is that device capable of running Jenny? I'm assuming it runs on battery?
It is on a battery. One battery is approximately 45 minutes. We carry spare batteries. Normally, we don't, if you don't have a return of circulation within 20 to 30 minutes, you're usually not going to get that patient back with advanced life support with the medications and everything that we give. We're doing everything that inside a hospital would do, but we're doing it right there where the incident occurred. So you get a better chance of a patient revival. If we do get return of circulation, we do try to transfer them directly to MedFlight to get them into a heart center. With that, the device is capable to go on MedFlight also.
Thank you.
Anyone else, Commissioner Ross?
At the risk of sounding redundant Jenny, I just want to say again, thank you. About a year and a half ago, I had a chance to spend a day with Chief Collins, her team, Captain Anderson, and experienced real time, a real life example of what we just saw. And I can tell you, I was in the room and observed what these guys just showed you is what you get. Incredible professionalism, incredible calm, incredible efficiency. The patient, a very elderly woman, was dead on the floor. These good folks brought her back. We moved her to the Duck Fire Station where the medevac helicopter came from Manio, met us, picked her up, transferred her to Norfolk. And this team was amazing. So I just want to say again, what we saw was what you actually get in Dare County. And it's the best there is. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And I am ecstatic. I have a tremendous team through the entire department, from training and getting the folks in and what you see. They are more nervous to do this in front of you all than they are out on the street in a real life situation. And so thank you very much for the folks that came today. Any other questions that you have for me?
As you know, I've spent many a year doing this exact same thing with EMS. I'm a date myself. We used the Thumper. Okay? The Thumper was just like the Lucas 3, not just like it, but it was similar to the Lucas 3. It was the first prototype and it ran off the O2 cylinders.
Correct, used a lot of...
And you could run through an O2 cylinder in about 10 minutes at best.
And they moved around a lot on the chest of the patient.
Yes, they did.
They've come a very, very long ways with this.
Yeah, so this is an excellent device, really is. Thank you.
It is. Now, thank you all for the support of the EMS department. I know that it's difficult sometimes with the cost of this equipment and the cost that it is. You make tremendous investments into the EMS system here. And we greatly appreciate the support that you give us.
Thank you Jenny. And thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you very much.
Great work. Hopefully we'll save even more lives.
Absolutely.
Really good.
Thanks guys.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Great job y'all.
Chairman, item seven on the agenda is Dare County Farm Lease. We typically do a three-year lease and this is a three-year lease. The old lease expired. We put this out to bid. What you have in front of you is the bid. Again, it's almost exactly the same leases we've had in previous years. I think the dollars have gone up a couple of dollars. But for the most part, it's the same lease that we've had in the past.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve.
There's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman to approve the Dare County Farm Lease as presented. And it's been seconded by Commissioner Tobin. And the floor is open for this discussion. Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Chairman, and in that, I think, I don't think you included in your motion to adopt the leasing resolution that's required by the statute.
Yeah, I was going to take, they were separate, so I was going to take it separate. So there is a resolution. You want to read that resolution Bobby, if you will?
Oh, I don't know if I have that in front of me.
Page 21 in the...
I've got, I've got my copy here.
Here's the resolution. Whereas the county of Dare owns farmland consisting of approximately 348.98 acres located at 1603 Cup Road, Mans Harbor, NC. And whereas the county of Dare and Matt Raspus have agreed upon a lease under which Matt Raspus will lease the acreage, more particularly described as net acres in that certain lease agreement located at 1603 Cup Road, Mans Harbor, NC, as shown on First Colony Farm Inc.'s Unit Planning Map for District 1, Creve Unit, for a term of three years beginning on the date of the execution of the lease for the purpose of cultivation exclusive of farm roads, canals, bee ditches, and windows, and windrows. And whereas North Carolina General Statute 168-272 authorizes the county to enter into leases of up to 10 years upon resolution of the county commissioners adopted at a regular meeting after 10 days' public notice. And whereas the required notice has been published and the Dare County Board of Commissioners is convened in a regular meeting, therefore be it resolved that the Dare County Board of Commissioners approves the lease of the county property described above to Matt Raspus for three years and directs the county manager to execute any instruments necessary to the lease. This is sixth day of January 2020.
Motion to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve.
By Commissioner House, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you gentlemen.
Similarly, item eight is the Monarch Beach Club Lease. As you know, the Monarch Beach Club is the group that rents or uses the property over at the old COA building. We refurbished the Kellogg Supply property that we bought a few months ago and have offered that space, a part of that space to them to run their programs over there. This lease is similar to the lease that we had before. It's a net no-cost lease to them. We provide the space and we provide the maintenance. And they operate their facility there and we provide that space for them. That's what we'll be doing in this as well. Again, this is a similar lease. It also has a similar resolution. Once we have approved this lease, then that will authorize them to move forward. Once we move forward with getting them set up in that building, then we're at a place where we can start demolition or whatever else we need to do on the old COA site.
Great. Pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve the lease agreement.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve the lease agreement with Monarch Beach Club of Dare for a period of three years. Adopt the resolution and authorize the county manager to execute that lease. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
And you have a similar resolution to adopt. Do you want me to read that?
Would you please, county manager?
Whereas the county owns 715 North Highway 64, 264, Manio, NC. And whereas the county of Dare and the Monarch Beach Club of Dare have agreed upon a lease under which the Monarch Beach Club of Dare will lease a portion of that certain building located at 715 North Highway 64, 264, Manio, NC, commonly known as the old Kellogg Supply Building, containing approximately 3,600 square feet, together with the adjacent parking and signage for a term of three years, beginning on the date of execution of the lease, for the purpose of a day activity program for adults with intellectual and development disability. And whereas North Carolina General Statute 168-272 authorizes the county to enter into a lease of up to 10 years upon resolution of the county commissioners adopted at a regular meeting after 10 days' public notice. And whereas the required notice has been published and the Dare County Board of Commissioners is convened in a regular meeting, therefore be it resolved that the Dare County Board of Commissioners approves lease of the county property described above to the Monarch Beach Club of Dare for three years and directs the county manager to execute any instruments necessary to the lease. This is sixth day of January 2020.
Thank you, sir. I believe that was part of the motion, so we don't need another motion to approve.
Chairman, that leads us to item nine on the agenda. And Lee Nettles is here and this is Dare County Tourism Board Request for Consent for Expenditures from the Long-Term Unappropriated Line, item 4585.
Good morning, Lee. How are you this morning?
Good morning. Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, Happy New Year as well. I come before you today to request your consent on an expenditure from the Dare County Tourism Board Long-Term Restricted Fund, Unappropriated Line, item 4585. The tourism board recently received a request from the Chickamaconoco Historical Association to assist them in purchasing a parcel of property located adjacent to and immediately south of the Chickamaconoco attraction. After consideration, the tourism board voted unanimously to award $70,000 to assist in the purchase of this property, to help maintain the integrity and the aesthetic of the attraction. The historical association was concerned that the property might be purchased by someone else and built upon negatively impacting the experience of visitors to the 1874 and 1911 stations, both of which are on the National Register of Historic Places. So the tourism board agreed with the historical association that it was important to kind of maintain the properties as vacant. So we would assist the association in hopefully purchasing those properties.
Okay, any questions of Lee?
I'm familiar with the property and so, for those reasons, it's good. It will also enable them, but they need to do something in the future. They have control.
Great.
We did something very similar to this, what, a couple of years ago, three years ago, something like that, to help them with the purchase of an adjacent property. And this kind of fills out that side of the property.
That road frontage.
Great.
Cool hill.
Then the pleasure of the board is?
Move to approve.
There's a motion to approve by Commissioner Bateman and Commissioner House.
I'll second it.
And it's seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Lee.
For your support.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, item 10 on the agenda. Dr. Landon Mason is here with the Economic Improvement Council to give you an update on a grant application, I believe it's being made.
I don't see him.
Oh, neither. He wants to review it.
This is the, the Economic Improvement Council, as you're aware, they get a large grant for multiple counties in the region. What you have in front of you is their grant application.
Right.
That grant application is to do a variety of things. It helps to fund our EIC program that we have over near Bowser Town that we operate and we help fund as well. And do some other things throughout the county region. The grant is there for your information. And if you have questions, then to provide those questions to the clerk so that we can provide them to them and get your questions answered. Beyond that, I don't really know that I can tell you more than that. But certainly if you have questions, we'll find the answers to those.
Okay. Commissioner, account.
Bobby, what kind of insight does the community have in the establishing this grant here in the county?
If you look at the grant, you see it's a very large grant. It's like $10 million. That's the total agency budget. And so when they do this, they're getting a grant for Camden, Chawan, Kurutuk, Dare, Gates, Hyde, Pasquetank, Prequemans, Terro, and Washington Counties. And then they use those funds for the various programs of the EIC. For our purposes, the most obvious one is our EIC program that we run right over here that Betty Shelby's involved with. She's come to you before and we've helped fund that as well. Some of their funds go to that grant program as well. So those are the kinds of things that they do throughout multiple of those counties.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Bobby?
Yeah, just a quick one. The $285,000, that would be just for our, what is it, about 10 counties? That would be our portion of the $10 million total budget.
Correct.
That's what I thought I saw.
Any other questions that we need to submit or?
Just informational.
Yeah. Doesn't require any action value.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
That moves us to item 11. And at long last, Donna is here to give you the presentation on the Dare County flood maps.
Good morning, Donna.
Good morning. Happy New Year. It's been quite some time since I've been in front of you to talk about the flood maps. But I am pleased to start off the year by that discussion. The flood maps were released to Dare County on June 30th, 2016. So by the time they become effective, it will be almost four years to the date. So although they are new flood maps, they're not really new to us. We've been talking about them for some time and trying to come up with a response to those maps. And I'd like to thank Mr. Overton for taking time out of his schedule today and coming and speaking at Public Comment. They have been involved in our process as well as the other local planners. And the comments that I make today are pertinent to unincorporated Dare County and the regulations that we enforce and administer. We oversee the unincorporated portions of the county. Although the flood maps include the towns, the comments that I make this morning are particular to unincorporated Dare County. I do anticipate the towns will undertake similar procedures, but they will be reflective of their own particular situations. We did receive the letter of final determination, which is the final step or one of the final steps in the flood map process. The flood maps are developed by the state of North Carolina and FEMA with very little input from us, other than we process the procedures to get those adopted. That letter was dated December 19th, 2019. And that starts a six-month time clock for when those maps become effective. So based on that date, the maps will be effective on June 19th, 2020. June 19th, 2020. So in that six-month time period, we have to start the procedures that will affect the adoption of the flood maps. If we do not do that, the flood maps become effective themselves. So we do want to be involved in those procedures. Those procedures involve certain notifications of the public hearing process. We have to revise the Dare County Flood Development Prevention Ordinance. And for unincorporated Dare County, we have several zoning districts that use base flood as the building height reference point. So we will be making some amendments to a handful of zoning districts. And I'm sorry, I'm so involved in this. I haven't been in front of you guys in so long that I'm not even doing my PowerPoint presentation. So let me get caught up here. I apologize for that.
It's been since last year.
I know. The ENTs are nervous. I'm nervous. Anyway, as I said, there are certain procedures that we have to implement to adopt these flood maps and the revisions to the ordinance. Those procedures involve the planning board. The planning board has to make a formal recommendation on this. These procedures typically take three to four months, so we want to make sure that we have everything in order by the time June 19 rolls around. And so we want to start early on so that we're not caught short sighted. Those procedures typically take three to four months due to the scope of the changes. Instead of the one public hearing that the Board of Commissioners will hold, we will be holding several public meetings with the stakeholders. We will have outreach activities stressing the importance of flood insurance, so there's a lot that we have to do in between now and June 19. So the maps are very different, as you heard Mr. Overton state. And just before I start getting into the nitty-gritty of the maps, I'm just wanting to take a step back. For those who aren't involved in what a flood map is and deal with it on a regular basis, you have flood zones on a flood map. The flood map is used for insurance rating purposes and the flood ordinance is the construction and the regulatory end of it. On those flood maps, and the flood maps that we have now, they're all digital, they're all on the state's website that you have to go to and look up, and so they're not the print copies like we used to have in the old days. But on those flood maps, you have, or Dare County is going to have five zones, but there's the AE zone, which is the typical flood zone, and that is indicative of the still water flooding, and that usually has a number associated with it that establishes your base flood. Then you have VE zones, which is the V stands for velocity, and that's wave action on top of the still water flooding, and those are typically along the oceanfront. Then on the new maps, we have a great deal of what's called the shaded X zone, and the shaded X zone is your 0.2% annual chance of flooding. The AE is your 1% annual chance of flooding, and so there's the X zone, and then there's the shaded X zone, the AE zone, and the VE zone. So as I delve into this, if I use any terminology that you're not familiar with, please interrupt me so that I can explain that, because I get all excited about flood maps and I forget that not everybody is enthused as I am about it. So, the flood maps. The current maps that we have are effective in 2006, and on those flood maps, in the AE zone, there's 12,875 properties. On the 2020 maps, those are going to be 8,493 properties in the AE zone. Those properties that are remaining in the AE zone, they're having their base flood elevations drop as well, so if you were in an AE zone now, and you're transitioning to an AE zone on the 2020 maps, you're probably going to be in an AE 4. The VE zones, on the 2006 maps, we have 1,828 properties. On the 2020 maps, that number is dropping to 124 properties. The majority of those VE zones are transitioning to AE zones. On the 2020 maps, there's 2,890 properties that are being reclassified as a shaded X or an X zone. So not only are there a large number of properties that are being reclassified to a lower risk flood zone, the elevations in the properties that are remaining in a flood zone are also So those are the numbers for Dare County. This is a slide that the state provided us, and I don't know how well those numbers show up, but it just illustrates the changes that are occurring in the towns, and they are seeing similar numbers in terms of the properties that are transitioning to a shaded X or an X zone, or ones that are having their elevations dropped. So what are the impacts of the maps? When the revised maps become effective in June of 2020, they will be used for insurance rating purposes. So if you have a flood policy in effect now and it's renewed on or after June 19, 2020, it will be based on those new maps. If you get a new flood policy on or after June 19, it'll be based on those flood insurance maps. There is a potential for increased savings for property owners for their flood insurance, and so it is very important that property owners talk to their flood insurance agent in between now and the 19th to find out what impacts those new maps will have on their properties. But the most important thing I want to remind folks is, is if you have a flood insurance policy and you transition to an X zone, that you need to keep that flood insurance policy and talk to your insurance agent about how much money that's going to save you. So overall, the numbers that I just read to you, they represent a 41% decrease in the number of properties that are in a flood zone. The shaded X and the X zone properties do not require flood insurance if they are associated with a federally insured mortgage, and that's pretty significant. You just heard me talk about how the X zone or the shaded X zone is called the 500-year flood by a lot of folks, and the AE is referred to as a 100-year flood zone. And I'm going to tell you that those terms are very, very misleading, and I hope that we can stop using them as part of our phraseology, just like we try not to use affordable housing. I want us to get away from using 100 and 500-year flood zones. Just to illustrate this point, we had Irene in 2011, we had Arthur in 2014, in 2016 we had Hermine, we had Matthew again in 2016, we had Michael in 2018, we had Dorian in 2019. So that's six events in 10 years. That's considerably less than 500 or 100 years. So that's when I say that those terms are misleading, they're very misleading, and that's one of the things that the outreach activities that we'll be conducting will be addressing. So the impacts of the maps, not only are the numbers of the changes significant, the areas where these numbers are changing are significant. The properties that are transitioning to shaded X and X zones in some instances have flooded, and they have repeatedly flooded.
Donna, could I just ask one quick question on that one? This is kind of related to the question I had sent you by email. I'm just trying to understand, and maybe there isn't a good explanation. You've very clearly laid out the storms we've had over the last 10 years.
Yes, sir.
Some of them very significant.
Yes, sir.
You've also explained the former reference of 500-year flood zone to shaded X and X. You've now clearly stated that many properties in the X and shaded X zone did flood, some repeatedly, and yet FEMA and the guidelines still have them as X.
Yes, sir.
It doesn't seem to make sense to me. And again, I'm not trying to derail your presentation to a lengthy sidebar, but it just, on the surface, it didn't make sense.
Well, and that ties into part of the recommendations that we're making today, that the flood maps are developed by FEMA and by the state of North Carolina, and they're based on coastal flood models, computer flood models, and they have acknowledged that these flood models are somewhat out of date, because they started running the flood models and developing these flood maps seven, eight years ago, and so they're not necessarily reflective of the Matthews and the Dorens and all, and so that's the explanation that they offer to us.
So we'll use models that may be eight years old, not up to date. We will not recognize current actual data, but here they are anyway.
That's why it's the recommendation that you're going to hear in just a few minutes of what we're doing, and so, you know, it's FEMA, that's the best answer that I can give you, yeah.
I wasn't...
Commissioner, part of our correspondence and conversation, ongoing conversation over periods of time, we pointed out that they did not include the Matthew and the Hermine numbers with respect to flooding, but that fell on deaf ears, and that's where we had a lot of additional flooding.
I feel that. That captures it as best as you can. It fell on deaf ears.
Right.
And it's, anyway, please, Donna, thank you.
I've got a question. So it's my understanding that they based these figures when they came up with these flood planes on Isabel?
Yes.
That's right.
But listen, Isabel was just like Irene. We got the same uninited of water in Hatteras, Kitty Hawk, Duck. So why wouldn't they take that into consideration when they looked at the maps and said, listen, we got six foot of water total surge in?
Right. Well, when they're running the coastal flood models, they're running them for the entire state of North Carolina. And so some of the counties to the south of us, they experience new flood maps that go in the exact opposite direction of us because they did reflect Isabel and Floyd and those other storms. And so, again, it's a flaw in the coastal modeling in North Carolina is bound by their agreement with the federal government to use the FEMA coastal modeling and not take advantage of some of the other modeling that may be available from the college systems or other third parties.
But Donna, even though, if I understand this correctly, even though for insurance purposes, let's say, the new modeling can play to the benefit of the residents in the county.
Yes, sir.
We can still use common sense on our ordinances and regulations and building regulations to provide some semblance of common sense to the thing.
Yes, sir. And if you'll recall, in one of my previous presentations to the boards, we acknowledged that the maps represented an opportunity for flood insurance savings for property owners, but that we, again, acknowledged that there was a flaw in the modeling and that we were going to come in and identify some sort of regulatory framework that we could apply, that common sense approach, if you will.
Right. Wally, Donna, I want to follow through on that as well. You know, things like on your waterfront properties, with the, a lot of sound fronts we have and canal fronts down in Hatteras, things like hanging enclosures, they're not going to be impacted by this. This is strictly flood. These building ordinances are not impacted. Also, areas of environmental concern there with the decking and stuff, that stuff is not a part of this. That stays static. We would address that separately going forward.
Well, a lot of what you just talked about was camera regulations, the hanging enclosures, and again, that's a lot of how those are addressed are through the insurance underwriting, and we have no control over that. We will control through the flood ordinance where you elevate and what occurs underneath that area that's below the base flood. That's what the flood ordinance addresses.
All right.
Anything else? Okay, so getting back to my presentation, with the change to the shaded X and the X zone, there's a concern that property owners will not fully realize the risk of their property based on a review of the flood insurance maps, and that as a result, they'll decide that their property is not at risk to flooding and they will drop or discontinue their flood insurance. This is particularly true for those folks that may be relocating to Dare County that have not been here to experience one of our flood events, and so they are going to look at the map and be advised by their mortgage professional that they don't need to get flood insurance because the federal government doesn't require that. And our goal is to try to educate those folks to understand that just because the flood map shows that you're in an X zone or a shaded X zone, that you do have a risk to flooding, that flood zones do, floods can happen anywhere, anytime. 25% of the flood claims that are filed happen in X zone properties. There's also another concern that where we update the flood maps or where FEMA updates the flood maps every 10 years or so, that there will be a bounce-back effect, and that the next time the flood maps are updated, that will revert back to these higher elevations or to a higher elevation, and that that will result in non-conforming structures and also an increase in flood insurance rates. I'm just going to go through some of these more significant changes of the maps, just to illustrate our concerns. So here you have a smaller version of the 2006 map for the oceanfront in Avon Village. This is Ocean View Drive. Ocean View Drive has experienced extensive flooding the past couple of months. There on the 2006 maps, there's a VE zone, which is the green zone. The blue zone is the AE zone, an AE 8. The map on the right-hand side is the 2020 map. You'll see that Ocean View Drive is transitioning to a shaded X, the yellow zone, or just the non-colored zone or the aerial zone there is an X zone. So again, it's the significance of the areas that are changing, not just the numbers. Hatteras Village, the map up at the top corner is the 2006 map, the oceanfront there in Hatteras Village, the green, it's the VE zone. The blue zone is the village area, that's an AE 8 or an AE 9. The bottom corner is the 2020 map. You'll see that there is a large area of shaded X zone along the oceanfront. That's the area of Hurricane Isabel that got substantial flooding in Hurricane Isabel. The village that's remaining in an AE zone, those elevations are dropping to three and four feet there in Hatteras Village. Here's Collington. This is Collington Harbor. You'll see the upper right-hand, the upper left-hand corner is all the canals there in Collington Harbor. Those are an AE 8 zone now on the 2006 maps, on the 2020 maps. Those areas are transitioning predominantly to a shaded X zone. The areas that are remaining in the flood zone are an AE 4. So a lot of those people that live on elevated structures have ground floor enclosures that are below base flood now that are limited by law to parking access and storage, and there's a concern that those folks are going to try to convert those ground floor enclosures and be at risk to flood damages. Yes, sir.
So if I'm understanding that diagram or that photo, elevation on Collington, hopes we've lost it.
Yep, we've lost it. I don't think that was my doing. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
My question was, in the previous '06 map, it was an AE 8 throughout most of Collington, which would imply eight foot above base flood. Have I got that right?
When you measure base flood, you factor in what your natural grade is. So if your natural grade is four feet and there is a base flood of eight feet, your first floor of living area has to be two or above eight feet. So you compensate for that difference between the ground level and what the map says you have to be, so.
And the new designation as, what was it, shaded X, I think it was?
Yes, sir. It's a shaded X, which means that there are no elevation standards according to the flood maps.
You can build on the ground.
You can build slab on grade. And then the grade levels there in Collington are pretty low, four feet. Yeah, yeah.
Wow. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding.
Right, right, right. Well, no, that's the same reaction we've had, you know, six, four years ago when we got these maps, yeah.
Honestly, I was going through it last week, getting ready, and I thought, nah, I'm misreading that somehow.
Donna's lost her mind. No, Donna has not, no. No, that's the same reaction that we've had, yeah. And I'm going to wait for those guys to get me back running.
Donna, while they're getting you up, let me ask you this. If you're an insurance person, are you happy about this or are you sad about this?
What I've heard from the insurance people is that they're alarmed by the changes in the maps. We've had meetings with, I had a meeting back this summer with a lot of the mortgage professionals and the insurance professionals, and they are sharing the same concerns as us because they have the empirical knowledge, just like we do, based on their flood claims of where the floods occur. And, you know, people like to save money, but the opportunity to save money shouldn't come through your flood insurance policy, just based on these maps here. The one, Kurutuk County's maps have already been adopted, and what's happening up there is that the properties that are transitioning to the X and the X zones, that the mortgage companies are sending letters to property owners saying, we've canceled your flood insurance because you're no longer in a flood zone, and so we got to try to address that, and that's one of the challenges that we have with our outreach activities. So the guys that got me back up here, here's Collington, and so what is the recommended response that we have to these maps? So currently in the VE zones, which are generally along the oceanfront, we have a one-foot freeboard that's in effect now. That the freeboard locally Dare County adopted a one-foot freeboard in 2014. We're not recommending any change to the VE zones in the terms of freeboard. In the AE zones and the AO zones, we're recommending a three-foot freeboard above base flood elevation or elevation to a local elevation standard, what we're calling the LES. In the shaded X and the X zones, we're recommending that you be elevated to this local elevation standard, and the number that we have identified for the local elevation standard is eight feet. This eight-foot number has been tossed around for several months, and it's based on input from the stakeholders as well as a lot of study of maps and historical firms that we have. Why eight feet? And so that's the question, and we've tossed around, is eight feet enough? Is eight feet too much? And so early on, we went back and we sought input from the surveying community who are out in the field every day and know the topography of Dare County, and their input indicates to us that eight feet is the appropriate number. One of our goals is to stay similar to the 2006 maps, and so AE 8... number. One of our goals is to ha- stay similar to the 2006 maps, and so AE eight is what's predominant on the 2006 maps. Plus, we also have a very extensive knowledge of what floods and where it floods and how high the floods are, and so that's factored into all of that.
Donna, just one quick question on that, too.
Yes, sir.
AE eight, I accept that that's a good number. If I'm sitting here saying, you know, and I think it should be AE ten, I think it should be 10 feet, in fact, is there a cost slash construction, engineering, et cetera, issue related to going from eight to 10 or eight to some higher number?
Y- yes, sir. There is a cost associated with that, and, and when you build in Dare County, you have to address the flood, so you have to build up, but then you also have to address wind, and there's a certain point that the engineers will tell you that if you go up too high, then you expose yourself to more wind. So, um, trying to find that number and whether eight is the correct number, uh, we're, we're using historical knowledge and empirical knowledge of flooding, but as Mr. Overton said, that's a minimum standard, and you can always elect to go up a couple more feet, and people do that now. Um, they choose to do that now. So what, one of the things that we first did, and they've lost, there we go. One of the things that, um, we looked at several months ago was the historical flood maps. The first flood maps for Dare County were adopted in 1978, and those flood maps simply determined A zones and V zones, there were no base flood elevations. In 1986, the flood maps were revised and they did establish base flood elevations, and you'll see the predominant number there is an AE eight. I've listed all of the flood zones that applied in all of the different villages in Dare County. The same thing for 1993, predominant was AE eight. On the 2006 maps, again, the predominant flood zone is an AE eight. The right-hand column has, has all of the, uh, flood zones for, on the 2020 maps listed, and you'll note that every village there in unincorporated Dare County has shaded X included in it. Um, so again, predominant elevation is AE eight, and our goal was to remain consistent with the 2006 because we know from our empirical knowledge that those structures that were elevated to the, to the 2006 levels when Hurricane Irene rolled through, that folks had flooding in their ground floor enclosures, but the ones that were elevated to the 06 maps and the previous elevated maps, that their living areas were generally not impacted. So, how will the LES work? How will this local elevation standard work? The idea is to treat the shaded X and the X zones as if they were still in the flood zone. Um, your first floor of living area, where you have your heated and conditioned space, would have to be elevated to this regulatory flood level. You could not have any, any heated space below that eight-foot mark. It would be restricted to parking access and storage, just like if you were in a AE zone now. We measure that at the bottom of the lowest floor, so the construction standards are everything below, everything here to this mark has to be heated and conditioned space. Your utilities, your duck work cannot be below that regulatory flood elevation mark, and you would also have to have flood vents beneath, under, in the, in the areas that were the ground floor enclosure that were below that mark, and you would have to submit an elevation certificate, again, as if you were building in the AE zone.
That's good. It's good stuff.
So I'm just going to go through, and I know this is lengthy, but I think it's important just to get to the basis of this, some examples of how this LES would affect, uh, construction. If you have a property that's in an AE zone, um, you'd have a three-foot freeboard or to eight feet, whichever is higher. So if you're in a AE six zone on the 2020 maps, you're going to have a three-foot, a freeboard applied because that's going to get you to nine feet. If you're in an AE four zone, three feet of freeboard's only going to get you to seven feet, so we're going to kick in that local elevation standard and say you got to build to eight feet. So eight feet is the magic number. Anything below that would be restricted to parking access and storage because it's in the flood zone and that's regulated by the federal flood laws. In the shaded X zone, the eight feet factors into your natural grade, and that determines whether the local elevation standards will apply or if you don't have to deal with the local, the local elevation standards. So if your natural grade is five feet and you come in to build a new house, we're going to tell you, you have to elevate your first floor of living area to eight feet. If your natural grade is nine feet, then none of those standards are going to apply and you can, you don't have to deal with, with that level of, uh, regulatory framework. The existing structures in the shaded X and the X zone, we spent a great deal of time talking about how existing structures will be affected by the local elevation standard. Ground floor enclosures in shaded X and X zones could not be converted to living area unless they could maintain that eight-foot mark. If you go to build on to your existing structure to build a lateral addition, increase your footprint, then you could build at the time, whatever your floor level is at the time of your original construction. And if you remodel, then we would allow you to build at that level, too. The, the distinction there is, is that the shaded X and the X are being affected by a local standard that we can control. How you build on to existing structures in an AE zone or a VE zone is affected by the federal rules, and we can't change that. So, what happens now? Um, the board will give instructions to the planning director to proceed forward with our implementation procedures and move forward with the local elevation standard. We will implement, implement our outreach activities for the revised flood maps and the revised flood ordinance with the goal of being, coming back to the Board of Commissioners in April of 2020 with a formal recommendation so that we can get everything, uh, schedule a public hearing and have everything adopted well before June the 19th. I'll stop right there. Yes, sir?
Do we expect on those X and shaded X zones especially, any kind of pushback from people in the neighborhoods about, geez, what are you guys doing with this local elevation standard to eight feet and so on?
Uh, there, there very well may be pushback. That's why we're going to have all these public meetings to see. I think, um, as we all know, that the, there's an inherent flaw in the flood maps, or at least from, from the planning standpoint, uh, and from the stakeholder standpoint, and so, w- we want to protect individuals so that they, their, their flood risk, that they realize what their true flood risks are. We don't want to have that bounce back effect five, 10 years from now when the flood maps change, and so, um, that's what the procedures will be, and I think we have good answers if, when we do get that pushback of why we're doing this.
Last question. Five hundred homeowners now in X and shaded X in the new maps cancel flood insurance. We get another Matthew. Five hundred homes are flooded, no insurance. What happens?
They don't get paid.
Yep.
No insurance. You don't have insurance.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Yeah, al- also, um, Rocky Ronson Road down in Buxton, uh, there's a, don't be lulled into a false sense of security because those shaded, shaded X zones flooded.
Yep.
With, uh, Dorian.
Absolutely.
Right. I got one question.
Yeah.
I get it. If we're going, if we're going from like an AE to an X, we're going to impose these standards. Suppose I'm an X today. I'm an X zone right now, and the flood change maps don't affect me at all, and I've got a vacant lot. When I come in to build on my X after we adopt this ordinance, do I now have to go to eight feet like everybody else, even though the flood maps didn't change me any?
Yes, sir, but in, but in concept, in concept, those properties that are already in the X zone are more than likely their natural grade is above eight feet. We have had GIS department do elevation maps for us and all, and so we've studied that. I can't give you an exact number. Um...
If that's true, we won't have pushback, but if you're in, that's where the pushback would come from. If I'm now in an X and I could build on slab.
Right.
But, and the flood maps didn't change, I'm still X before and after, but now I have to raise.
Yeah. See, I believe the existing six maps, X were okay.
Most of the, most of, right, right.
It's the change from AE to X now.
Yes, sir.
And if most of those properties are already above base flood, then it won't be a problem.
Most of the X zones on the 2006 maps are on the north end of Roanoke Island. Some are in Buxton. There's a handful in Collington, and those elevations are already above eight feet. Um, so they're not going to be impacted by that. We, we did factor that into all of our discussions. It's, it's these areas that are the new X and the shaded X there along the oceanfront and, and Avon and Collington Harbor. It's, it's very rare to find eight feet of elevation in Collington Harbor.
Right.
When we started this discussion two years ago?
2016.
Yeah, three years ago. Then the goal was, how do we maintain the status quo? How do we sort of grandfather in the current elevations? Because we thought 2006 elevations were okay.
Yep.
And the question was, how do you do that? And that's the conversation for the last three or four years that Donna has been having with the user groups and the community and all that, to come up with these recommendations that they're about to give you. Is it perfect? Probably not, but as best you can get to that goal, I think this accomplishes that.
Yes, sir. We, we hope so.
I think the, the more education, and we're doing a good job. Uh, I attended the meeting. It was here with the stakeholders, right in this very room, and that communication and that information that's going out to the people who are going to be impacted by these is going to help them make the right common sense decision. We're not, uh, taking a, we're not being lackadaisical about this. We're putting the information out there, and any mistake that is made on beha- on behalf of a homeowner is going to be on them.
And I, I just want to point out, uh, the public information radio spot you have out is excellent.
Yep.
It, it definitely covers it and it gets the word out. Um, also, I was, I was also kind of pondering, um, especially when you mentioned, uh, new people moving into Dare County who's not familiar with the county and the flooding situation. Have we reached out to the Board of Realtors to let the Realtors know that they really need to educate their, their...
Yes, sir. That, that's one of the stakeholder groups that we'll be, we'll be meeting with, and I, and, and, um, the Board of Realtors, the executive officers, they've, they've been involved in this process as, as a user group all along. Um, and so I had a, a community meeting scheduled with them the week after Hurricane Dorian, and so we canceled that, but that's one of the first groups that I'll be meeting with. But they've been getting this information, and so w- we've, uh, we've brought them into the fold. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Donna, are the, um, flood insurance rates going to be based on the freeboard that we're adding or the existing rates that come down to us?
Flood insurance rates are based on what's on the map.
That's right.
But the higher, the greater your separation of your first floor of living area is from that base flood, your, your flood insurance rate reflects that, and there's lots and lots of things that go into the determination of your flood insurance rate, but the local freeboard is not the base that, that, that the insurance agent uses. It's, it's what's on that, that flood map.
So just for clarity, someone's at a eight-foot now. The rate drops to a six-foot. Um, we have a six-foot plus a two-foot freeboard. They're basing on the six-foot map cost, and because you're two-foot above, your flood rate's probably going to be a lot less than they were before because of the fact you have the two-foot freeboard.
It, it should be. That's why it's important for folks to have a conversation with their insurance agent, because what the insurance agents have told me, or if you're in an AE zone now and you transition to an X zone, that it may be better for you to keep your AE zone policy versus a X zone policy. So there's all kinds of, um, details in there that the insurance agents are the experts on and, and, and not myself. All I know to tell them is, is you need to talk to them because it, there's a, there's an opportunity there for you, and you don't want to miss that savings, but you also don't want to leave yourself wide open to, to a flood risk and, and cancel your flood insurance.
And, and you, that same, so that, my, my house is in an AE, it's going to go to an X. I'm going to keep my AE and keep paying the AE rate because I know that when the rate, when they come back and do the mats, maps again, I'm going to go back to AE. If I go down and buy it at an X rate or cancel it, then I'm going to be paying the non-subsidized rate when I go back and have to get it for my new AE, whereas if I keep paying, I'm grandfathering it at the low rate.
What would happen in a situation like that would be, um, your, your flood changes, and by the way, it, your rate is based on that elevation certificate that that engineer goes out and does. There's a base, base elevation floor, first floor elevation. All of those numbers are, are factored into what your rate is going to be and how much premium you pay. If in fact you did, uh, change that and, and didn't continue to pay, uh, an AE rate and you're in a X, you have a loss, and, um, and you're in that new zone and you're that new, that rate. If you have a loss, they will go back and look at that and adjust that rate before they pay that loss. They'll make you pay that difference. And that's, it, they'll pay the loss, but you'll have to pay the difference in order for them to, um...
The difference in the coverage.
Difference in the coverage.
That's why the elevation certificate is important.
That's why it's so critical.
Well, yes.
And, and let me tell you, I do this every day, and no disrespect to those that are doing it, those engineers out there, but you have got to watch that. I mean, you have got to watch that and make sure that certificate is correct and accurate, because I have found in way too many instances that they're not always correct.
Right.
And, and you need to challenge that as a, as a, as a consumer to make sure that that is correct before that's submitted to your care.
Freshen it up, anything else, you know, spring for another one to get it freshened.
Right. And they're not, and of course, they're not cheap. They're, they're, they're costly to have those done.
Yes, but you can sometimes recoup that cost pretty quickly in the savings on your flood insurance.
That's exactly right.
Yes, sir.
That's exactly right.
And so if, if, if the board would just formally say, Donna, go do what you got to do. We're, we're good with the LES standards. We think that that's worth investigating. I would greatly appreciate that, just so the record will reflect that.
Do you need a motion for us to instruct you?
A motion, yes, sir. I think I included a motion in the, in the packet.
We need a motion to instruct staff to proceed with map adoption and updates to the flood ordinances to include consideration of local elevation standards.
They move.
As a motion by Vice Chairman and Commissioner Bateman, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sent. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Donna, thank you. And, um, and also, Jay, thank you, uh, the home builders and Realtors and our stakeholders for being a part of this. It's critical that we have that input, especially from our home builders, uh, with respects to where we move forward. And thank you for being a part of that, Jay. County manager, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that, um, that brings us to item 12 on the agenda. Brent Johnson's here with regard to some, a FEMA grant update. The real reason he's here is to be, for you all to designate him as the applicant's agent, but it was an opportunity for him to also update you on what he's doing, uh, with our FEMA grants for some home elevations and some other things. And with that, I'll leave it with you, Brent, to sort of give him an update of where you are.
Thank you.
Good morning, Brent.
Good morning, gentlemen. Happy New Year. Uh, sorry. So, first of all, I just want to go over the, the two different types of grants that we do utilize here in the county. First, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, HMGP. That one is tied specifically to a storm, a decorated storm, so Dorian, Michael Florence, and so on and so forth. Um, and then the, the other two are the Flood Mitigation Assistance Grants and the Pre-Disaster Mitigation Grants. Those are yearly grants that FEMA has that are, uh, designated and appropriate, uh, and, uh, budgeted, uh, yearly by Congress. Those come out every, uh, beginning of every fiscal year, so September, October timeframe. The, the difference between the two is that the HMGP program, uh, their funding is restricted to the amount of dollars that the state receives based off of the individual assistance and the public assistance, uh, given to the state by, by FEMA. So in the case of Dorian, right around four, forty-seven million dollars, uh, was claimed from the state, so the state will get 20% of that amount, uh, right around nine points, nine point seven, uh, million dollars that will be authorized for HMGP Dorian. Uh, the great thing about HMGP is that the FEMA picks up 75% and the state picks up 25% of the, of the cost share, whereas FMA and PDM, the 25% cost share is responsible of either the county or the homeowner, uh, depending on the type of project. So the current and future grants or projects that we have going on, uh, HMGP Michael with elevations, we currently have 16 homes, uh, for that one, and then for Florence, we have 24 homes that were put up for that. So those 40 homes, we should be hearing any time now, uh, on the result from the state. Uh, they, because the occurrences were so close to each other, the state informed us that they sent them to FEMA about the same time. Uh, so any day now, we should be hearing back if those 40 homes were approved or disapproved to be elevated. Uh, this year, a few months ago, we also submitted 15 homes for the FMA, the Flood Mitigation Assistance Program for 2019. Fifteen homes went up for that. Uh, the full application... The full application's due by the end of the month. And then we also submitted two pre-disaster grants for 2019, and those were two generator installs at the Frisco Admin Building and the Bomb Center. And then as Bobby mentioned, I think last meeting, we're also looking at updating our Stormwater Management Plan. It was last done in 2001. We're going to update that for, to kind of bring us up to the new, to 2020 standards and look at some of the projects that we could potentially do in the future. HMGP Dorian, which the letters of interest are due at the end of the month. We have outreach meetings, and I'm sorry, there's a typo on the, on the slot. It's actually the seventh and eighth tomorrow down in Buxton and Wednesday here in Manio. We'll most likely get a lot of home elevations for that. And then we're also looking at putting a letter of interest in for the North End, Manio Flooding Project as well. So it's a very early stages. I talked to NC DOT last week just to kind of get their feeling on it. The LOI doesn't, doesn't bind us to anything, nor does the application. So we will look at submitting that to see if it's a potential project, but because it is HMGP funds, there are limited amount of funds available to the state right under $10 million. Any questions on current and future projects?
Brent, are there any FEMA grants set there for commercial?
So there, there are. As of right now, the county's policy is that we, we are not utilizing grant dollars for commercial elevations or, or commercial properties.
Right.
Anyone else? Okay, that brings us to some action. And is there a motion to approve Brent Johnson as the Dare County Primary Designee Applicant Agent for FEMA grants? There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Brent. Appreciate it.
Before I could interrupt you, we need to include me as the, as the secondary applicant.
All right, let's include Bobby as the secondary.
I'll amend my motion.
You amend this motion.
I'll second the amendment.
The second will amend it.
I will add the amendment.
Those, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, that brings us to the consent agenda.
I know.
On the consent agenda, you have the approval of the minutes, you have an NC DOT Utility Relocation Agreement, and you have a budget amendment for the Juvenile Services.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda as presented by Commissioner House. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the Vice Chair. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next, Mr. Chairman, your board appointments. Your first board is for the Commission for Working Wardmen. The terms of Dewey Hemeride and Joe Wilson expire this month. Both would like to be reappointed. There's also a vacancy for the non-voting Science Advisor. On file, you have applications from Sandy Kewell Grifio, Sharon Kennedy, and Charles Locke.
We'll take these individually if it's the pleasure of the board. So what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve. I don't have that paper, so. I think it's, yeah, motion to renominate Dewey Hemeride and Joe Wilson to the board.
That is correct.
Yes.
Any further discussion?
There is a, what do you want to do about the vacancy on the commission?
I'm actually working on that. I've got, I'm actually in contact with two different scientists right now that are considering the position.
Okay. Pardon?
Is, is that what the vacancy is, the Science Advisor?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
With that being said, what is the pleasure of the board of that motion?
Move, move to approve Dewey Hemeride and Joe Wilson.
Okay.
Reappointment.
Is there a second?
My second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next are a number of appointments for the Dare County Tourism Board. I guess I'll go through these one at a time.
Would you please?
Yes. First, George Banks is a member at large. He is not eligible for reappointment. You have applications on file from Judy Banks, John Winley, Daniel Lewis, John Power, Lynn McLean, John Tower, Dee Reed Corbett, Carl Klassen, Ada Hubble, Alan Moran, Darrell Collins, Christine Walker, Michael Sears, Benjamin Kahoon, Stephanie Walker, Christopher Toolwin, James Connors, Gary McDonald, Tim Cafferty, and Terrence Gray.
Move to appoint Tim Cafferty to the at-large seat.
Okay, there's a motion to approve Tim Cafferty to the at-large seat. Is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is Commissioner Wylie Overman's seat. He is not eligible for reappointment either, and Commissioner Irvin Bateman has expressed interest in filling that vacancy.
Move to approve Irvin Bateman.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch to approve Commissioner Bateman as the representative from the board. It's been seconded by the Vice Chair. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Restaurant Association. Bambos, Shalombos term expires this month. The Restaurant Association has submitted Karen Lupman Davis, Madeline Roberts, Roberts, and Donnie King, and they recommend Karen Lupman Davis.
Move to approve Karen Lupman Davis.
Motion on the floor by the Vice Chair to approve Karen Luperman Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner House and Couch. Further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
The Town of Nags Head is next. Webb Fuller is eligible for reappointment, and the Town of Nags Head has submitted and recommends that Webb Fuller be reappointed. Motion to approve Webb Fuller.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman to approve Webb Fuller as the Nags Head Representative, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner House. Further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Town of Killable Hills. Mike Hogan is not eligible for reappointment. Town of Killable Hills has submitted the following names, Commissioners Ivy Ingram, John Winley, and Bernard BJ McAvoy. Town of Killable Hills recommends Commissioner Ivy Ingram.
Most of us, these appointments, we, we reach out to these individuals and just double-check with them. I don't know if any of you have had any chance to speak with these. I know I haven't. I've got, had a phone call into these. So I, I wanted to see, certainly talk to those individuals that's been nominated. So at this point in time, has anyone else had an opportunity to speak with them? In fairness to them and their recommendation, I would certainly like to reach out and suggest that perhaps maybe we table this until we've had an opportunity to confirm.
Motion to table.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the Vice Chair. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, when we table, typically you table to a specific date. Are you talking...
We can do that. We can table to our second meeting of this month, which will be the...
20th.
20.
21st.
21st. Absolutely, thank you.
Next is the Outer Banks Association of Realtors. William David Perkerson is eligible for reappointment. The Outer Banks Association of Realtors has submitted the following names, Doug Brenley and Colleen Schreiber. They recommend Doug Brenley.
Move to approve Mr. Brenley. Second.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch to approve Mr. Brenley. It's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
In the Town of Kitty Hawk, Jeff Pruitt is eligible for reappointment, and the town recommends his reappointment.
Move to reappoint Jeff Pruitt.
Motion on the floor to reapprove Jeff Pruitt. I believe it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And then it's the Town of Southern Shores. Christopher Nason does not wish to complete his term through January of 2021. Town of Southern Shores has submitted the following names, Leo Holland, Elizabeth Morey, and Jim Connors, and they recommend Councilman Leo Holland be appointed to complete Mr. Nason's term.
Move to appoint Councilman Leo Holland to complete Mr. Nason's term.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor by the Vice Chair to appoint Leo Holland. It's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Leo, I see you're here this morning. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Chairman, are your upcoming board appointments? February, you have Planning Board, you have three terms that expire. In March, you have none. And in April, you have the Mans Harbor Commission, and you have three terms expiring in April of 2020. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that would be your agenda.
Thank you, County Manager. That brings us to item 15 on the agenda, and that's Commissioners' business and Managers' business. Like to start that off this morning. Commissioner Bateman, would you mind starting that off today?
I'm just happy to be here. I'm good.
Oh, you're good? Oh, okay.
He's just happy to be here.
I didn't know if you had something coming next.
We're happy to have you, Commissioner.
We're happy to have you.
Good luck, see you.
There needs to talk if you haven't got to.
Thank you. Commissioner Couch?
Yes, sir. Both of a DOT nature. Want to thank the DOT for doing that mile and a half, coming off of the south approach to Bonner Bridge, chiefly because of the fact that they put a safety element in there. Yes, there's a lot of sand that comes on there, but that's gotten to be, with the sand that's on there and some of the water, it's gotten to be in bad shape, but also a safety hazard. A lot of people heading out for doctor's appointments or, gosh forbid, some of our visitors heading out before daybreak. It was getting kind of touch and go there with them. But now we've got the, the lanes as we speak are being redone. They're also putting a little safety shoulder there on the side because there is a lot of bike traffic in and out of there and hikers as well. Second thing is, was I want to thank Jared there with Flatiron. Got a tour of the Red Anthony Bridge, the Jug Handle Bridge. Folks, if you like the Bonner Bridge, you're going to like this one. And while it doesn't have the height, it's still got approaching 20 feet, two and a half miles. The sunsets and the sunrises coming off that are going to be really nice. We do have 45 mile an hour on, on the, on the, on the Bass Night Bridge. We'll have 45 on the, probably for a while. I don't know, I'm not a DOT engineer, but that's going to help with the safety because there are going to be people who are going to want to take advantage of those nice views on the Red Anthony Bridge. These bridges are, are good things. We're going to have to start changing the way we think of things. Back in the day before we became a tourist destination, when you had your home folks, I mean, they knew, they could adapt. They could slack the air out of their tires or, you know, if they got stuck, they'd sleep in their car. But now we, we're creatures of comfort and with all the visitors we're having here, we have to adapt to make sure that their safety is, is paramount. And that's what we're getting with these bridges. And it's becoming something that we're going to be looked at. Hopefully, we'll see some more of these in our lifetime, but these bridges, we're going to be a shining example in the state of North Carolina how we deal with the natural barrier island processes. And as we continue to work through what's going on up in Currytuck, I just think the Outer Banks region is really going to be a shining example of what goes on with transportation foresight into the future. And just like Commissioner Bateman, I'm happy to be here.
We're happy to have you, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your report. Commissioner Ross?
Well, heck, I'm happy to be here, too. I just joined that party. Thank you. I just had a couple of quick items. The Albemarle Commission, which services the 10-county area northeast part of the state, will be holding its annual election of officers at our January meeting, which is in 10 days, and also be reviewing our audit for the Albemarle Commission, for which we do not anticipate any problems or irregularities. We will also be holding, although I'm looking to see if Lee is still here. Lee is not, the smaller group task force that has been assigned with the Tourism Board to review options and a strategic plan for the event site in Nags Head. That, second meeting of that group will be held later this month, and I will again keep everyone apprised of any thoughts, actions, recommendations that emerge from that task force. I did want to also point out that on the 7th, tomorrow at 3 o'clock, there is a dementia awareness task force open forum, a focus group open forum at the Kitty Hawk United Methodist Church, heavily sponsored by Gentle Expert Memory Care, Ms. Gail Sinesso and her team. I will be attending that tomorrow. And as a corollary, we recently received an update from Senator Tillis's office of sort of agenda accomplishments that took place. And not that this would have jumped off the page, but I took note of item 17, which was an Alzheimer's Awareness slash Remedial Activity Initiative that Senator Tillis sponsored for $20 million a year in North Carolina for the next five years. And I am aggressively going after that. I've figuratively grabbed his assistant, Mr. Trey Lewis, by the collar and said, please, what do I need to do? What can we do to get at least some small portion of this for the people in Dare County that are working so hard to address dementia-related illness and all of the associated challenges that come with it? So I will keep you apprised. Trey agreed to get back to me on that, and fingers crossed that we can do something for the local folks from that one. And just as a quick wrap-up, I attended the December 17th Dare County Center Kids Toy Drive, for which Terry Gray and the motorcycle guys are so instrumental. I attended the zero to four-year-old group, and it was really, really neat. It's one of the great events we have during Christmas season, and it's just a shout-out to Sandy Pace and the whole group over there at the Dare County Center for the amazing work they do for our community. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Didn't you play Elf?
I did, I did. They said I was the biggest damn elf they've ever seen.
Thank you. Commissioner House?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. On December 17th, we did have a flounder scoping meeting here in this room. There were, I do want to thank Vice Chairman Overman and Commissioner Ross for also being there, and also Representative Hanig was also present, too. We had over, over 50 people at that meeting and very heavy discussions, back and forth. One of the main things that we pointed out, and I think every person that spoke, if you, I think Commissioner Ross can agree with this, everybody that spoke talked to, or referenced the way of how the stock assessments are done. And I think they got the message.
We hope so.
We hope so.
They do anything about it.
Right.
We hope so.
That's the key. We'll see, we'll see. But we're, we're working on it. We're working hard on it. The Dare County Commission for Working Wardmen is also hard on it, trying to get some leeway in, in there of at least opening their eyes a little bit and seeing that the way, just like I, I said during that meeting, to the, to that board was that if you put bad data in, you're going to get bad data out.
And just from what we saw today, we spent quite a bit of time with Donna questioning FEMA maps, bad data in, antiquated or inappropriate results out.
Exactly.
It honestly was going through my mind that night. Same, same scenario. We're getting handed down something that we believe is frankly flawed.
Yeah.
Flawed conclusions.
Exactly. So I think, I think they kind of opened their eyes to it. I think they're taking a, a, at least a look at it anyway, and hopefully we can get some things done. Also, on a, on a more protective note, and I'm sure my, our County Manager can agree, this year being 2020, usually with some type of legal documents, even like a check or something like that, you write the date 1/6/20. Well, especially in this year, you need to write that 1-6-20-20, because somebody can come by, like next year or whatever, or sometime during this year, and change that 20 to a 2021. And that way, that document you have is now not dated until next year.
Listen to that. I didn't even think of that.
So, some, yeah. Some of the, that was actually brought to my attention by the?
Facebook.
No. Actually not. That was brought to my attention from the International Association of Arson Investigators, and their, their legal panel. So, I thought that was interesting. I thought I'd pass that on as a safety note for all of our citizens here in Dare County. And I want to wish everybody a very happy, prosperous year coming up. And I know us as a board, we've got a lot of, lot of ideas cooking, and a lot of, a lot of future endeavors for us, and I think all of us have a positive outlook, and we're going to get things done. So, with that, Happy New Year.
Thank you, Commissioner House. I thought I was the only one that wrote checks anymore.
Nope. I write one check a month.
My kids get on me all the time. "You need to get with the new world and do everything online." I said, "No, I'm still from the old school. I'm going to write a check." So, Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As always, I'd like to say congratulations to our service pen recipients, Matthew Asia and Selena, for their forty-five years of service to Dare County, for Employee of the Year, Jody White, and for the New Employee of the Month, Dwayne Gibbs. Again, we're so very, very fortunate to have folks like this working for Dare County. I'd like to say Happy New Year to everyone as we begin a new year and a new decade. Let us please be thankful for what we have, and that we are so fortunate to live in such a wonderful place as this, on the face of this earth. Thirdly, I'd like to say, as, of items of importance going forward in this year, that I never miss a chance to mention these two things when we're talking to anybody of consequence related to these issues. We need a new bridge, while bridges were being mentioned, and the importance of them. We need a new one. Replacement across Alligator River. And with the Oregon, with the shelling that's going on in Oregon inlet right now, and I wish Commissioner Tobin were here to, to address this as well, we need jetties to stabilize this inlet. We have a new bridge. We have a new dynamic. But one of those dynamics that we're seeing right now is increased shelling, particularly on the west side of the bridge. Until we have jetties, that inlet will not be stabilized, as it appears at this point. With regard to the flounder scoping meeting, I worked for a gentleman one time who, from a, was mentioning it from a machinery sales standpoint, and he said, "There's no need to fish where there are no fishes." Kind of applying that directly to the scoping meeting with regard to the data gathering, it was interesting that while the, the state was putting out their test nets, they were catching no fish, yet our flounder fishermen were having as, as, as good a year as, as they could have in, in their pound nets. So, maybe what they need to do, instead of setting a test net, they need to go with our, our fishermen, who know where the fishes are, to determine whether or not, or what kind of stock assessment is, is a true assessment of that, of that fishery. Anyway, just wanted to kind of throw that in. And lastly, I'd like to say, since this was discussed pretty much by everybody, at my age, I'm happy to be anywhere. Thank you.
You're hanging in there well, buddy.
Thank you, bro.
Thank you, Vice Chairman, and thank you for pointing out those critical issues with the respect to jetties and, and, and the other issues. I had the opportunity to have breakfast with Senator Burr last week, and it was, it was, as you very well know, we've been in his setting and in DC, and, and he's very limited on the amount of time that he, he's able to spend with us in his office in DC. And I had that one-on-one with him last week for about an hour with some other friends of ours for breakfast, and I shared some of those same concerns that you mentioned earlier. So, he's quite aware of, of those issues, and hopefully, long-term, or maybe even shorter, he can help us with some of those issues. And then, last but not least, I'd certainly like to reiterate, January fifteenth, eight AM, Captain George's State of the County Breakfast, and we will kick off our hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary. And we will have, that'll be a kickoff, but we'll have a lot of other things going to happen through 2020 to, to commend that hundred and fifty years of, of, of our birth. With that being said, County Manager?
Yes, sir. A couple of things. At your desk is a, it's called a benefit consulting agreement from Clear Tracker HR. This is a program or a platform that allows us to manage all of the employee benefits in one place. So, when you go to open enrollment and you sign up for whatever benefits you want taken out of your check, it puts them all in one place, so that if you change your address or you move away, you don't have to go in and all those websites and change them again. This will take it across all those platforms and do it at one time. It's provided for us by Mark Three, our consultant. Doesn't cost us anything, but we have to enter the contract to provide access to the data and the information to Clear Tracker, so that's what it's for. I just, we just got it late last week, so it didn't get on your agenda. It's time-critical, so we needed to go ahead and get it out. So, I asked you all to approve that today.
Okay. Is there a motion to do so?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion by Commissioner House. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
I've told you before, at just about every staff meeting, we talk about customer service and the need to make sure we treat our people out in the community correctly, and that we're professional and all that. We've been doing it for a while, and we are starting to hear things back in the community that are positive. I'm going to share one with you. This is a really neat one, and it says a lot for what our staff, our department heads are doing, and more importantly, what our staff are doing to provide good customer service. This is the, was the email that said, "We got home late from Philadelphia on Thursday night. Sonny put his prescription sunglasses and his wallet in a Starbucks bag, hoping to keep it separate from the trash in the car. He forgot that he had done that, and he put the bag in the trash can when we got home. He woke up Friday morning in a panic, realizing that our trash was picked up several hours before. We prayed and asked the Lord to somehow return his glasses and wallet to him. I called Dare County Sanitation, even though I thought it was a lost cause. Angie Hooper got on the phone and contacted the truck driver. He had not yet gone to the landfill. He dumped the very full truck separately, and four people, including him, started to search through the trash. They found the Starbucks bag, but it was empty. Shortly after they found, but it was empty. Shortly after that, they found his wallet and continued to search for his sunglasses. They'd given up hope for ever finding them, when the guy you see here, and there was a picture in the orange, noticed a bright yellow release strap on one of the glasses near the excavator. Sonny's wallet and glasses were returned to him without scratch or without any damage."
Wow.
"If anybody wants to say anything bad about our sanitation department, they will have to fight us. These people stopped what they were doing to search through trash for our stupid mistake. We're very thankful for this group of people. When I asked what we could do for them in return, they said nothing. They were just glad to help, and that it was a miracle they found." Big thank you to Angie for her quick response, and thank you to Tom, Rhonda Kelvin, and Tom for their search, and for their supervisor, David Overton, who helped facilitate the search. That's what our employees do. That's what we do. This is pointed out, but it's something that they don't think about, and they do regularly, and we don't hear about a lot of it. So, kudos to our folks, and kudos to these guys over in sanitation.
Outstanding, Joe.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's great.
And then, the last thing I have, if you just look right in front of you, you should admire your new monitors.
Yes.